We're good for live? Okay. Um, good afternoon, everyone. Um, we had a slight technical glitch and we are live and up and running. This is the Wednesday, May 29th, uh, Finance Committee meeting, um, that was called to discuss the academies of Anchorage. Um, I wanted, let's go around the room briefly for introductions and then we'll check in and make sure, see who's online. So.
Pat Higgins, board member and member of the committee.
Marco Bellamy, board member.
Marky Lang, Chief of HR.
Andy Ratliff, CFO.
Jim Anderson, COO.
Jared Wright, Superintendent.
Kayla Grant, Executive Assistant.
America Slomson, Executive Assistant.
Cindy Shubum, CCL Director.
Uh, Kristen Johnson, I am Senior Director of Teaching Learning.
Stan Gass, Chief Executive Officer.
Mark Foster, Pullman.
And I'm Kelly Lessons, uh, Board Member and, um, chairing the Finance meeting. And online, we have.
Carl Jacobs.
Okay, Member Jacobs and maybe one or two more trending in shortly.
Kelly, this is Dora, I'm here as well. Kelly. Th- this is Dora, I'm online.
Hey, Dora, great.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Member Wilson, terrific. Um, okay, so I wanted to begin with gratitude for everyone's time today. And just thinking, um, back to the years of expertise that are in the room. Um, I feel very junior in this room. Uh, many of you, most of you have put in years and years of time into ASD and are part of the reason that they moved here 11 years ago. Um, so I just, I appreciate that. Um, I wanted to also acknowledge that, um, I don't know that anybody in this room wants to be here right now having this conversation. Um, but I do hope to have a good conversation and that at the end of this meeting, the Finance Committee, uh, generates a recommendation of some sort to bring to the Board at the June 4th meeting. Um, so I have pre-drafted a couple of options, but I do not believe that they are the extent of our options. And I am eager to receive feedback on, on potential paths forward, uh, for the Finance Committee to make a meeting. And just to be clear, we have a new Finance Committee meeting, a Finance Committee, given the Board reorganization. So, Members Bellamy, Members Higgins, and I are the Finance Committee.
I don't think we take over till July 1st.
Well, that was a question of who's, who's on the committee?
July 1st, our year ends July 1st for all committees.
Well, we've done it both ways in the past and the agendas have been switched over.
Yeah.
Um.
The reason was, um, President Holloman was the Chair of one of the committees and so I think there was a.
A governance.
Right.
And he announced that Carl was moving up at the meeting last time.
My understanding is that we held that from changing the Council's July 1st because that would be too difficult to do that transition just to be. You're convinced by experience.
Not, not for the last five, four years.
That's why I joined for you.
So, right, but they didn't start until July 1st with the new fiscal year. That's just how we, uh, undermined, undermined. Whatever Andy wants to do is Andy.
Is, is Andy's?
He is on.
Okay.
I thought it, I don't know, I can't remember, I know I was an ad hoc as president.
Uh, Dora, Member Wilson was a Finance Committee member. Uh, prior to Board Reorganization along with Member Higgins and myself. And under certainly next year's Finance Committee competition. So, Member Higgins remains, I remain, and you are joining. So, the question is today, are you a member of the Finance Committee or is Member Wilson?
I think you need to ask the member Holloman what he wants to do.
President Holloman, can you?
Done it before.
Can you clarify your understanding of the members of the Finance Committee?
Um, we did, you know, I didn't really think about it being much of an issue, but, uh, at the organizational meeting, people picked their committees. Um, and like you mentioned, I, I needed to cease being Chair of Governance. So, I just assumed the changes would go ahead and take place immediately. Um. But I didn't really put a lot of thought into it, I have to admit. It, it just seemed like since we were, uh, changing officers slightly, that, that it made sense to go ahead and change the committee composition at the same time. But that the community council assignments would stay through June, uh, since most of them don't meet in July. Uh, and then our, our new community council assignments, which haven't happened yet, would pick up in August.
Um, well, thank you. Well, I would say, uh, to Member Bellamy, would please consider, uh, being a member of Finance Committee effective today.
So, I, I mean.
I mean, if my policy.
Why, why, I don't even know why we're having this conversation, really.
Because I wanted to clarify.
The Finance Committee is the Finance Committee. It's just made, you guys, this is not, this is made. So, Dora and you are the Finance Committee, so I, you guys do your, do your thing.
Well, let me say this, we have a new president, the president by policy appoints people to the committee.
He points the Chair. We volunteer for the committees and appoints a Chair.
He makes it, you know, he, he's assigned to that and he's issued here his assessment that he made it effective immediately. I don't comply that with nothing in policy.
He made it effective immediately here, today, today.
Exactly, so when he did it.
No.
Well, there were a few, I, I guess I'm sorry that we're beginning the conversation this way. Um. It is a little bit on here at the moment.
If Dora is not willing to, if Dora is fine with me serving, I mean, but she's there, you can still use her. It's, Pat's still on the committee, so that would be the only change, right?
Yeah, right. The question is whether, if the Finance Committee is making a recommendation, whether the three people involved in making the recommendation would involve Committee A.
Committee A.
Committee A being last year's.
No, I assumed it was last year's, but apparently I was wrong. So, whatever, whatever the. Yes. Whatever you rule as Chair, I guess.
Um, my inclination is to pivot to the, the forthcoming committee. Um. That was my, my understanding coming into today's meeting. Um, so I guess I will ask at the end of this, um, should a recommendation of any to the Board? I would, I would welcome and appreciate your, um, your voice in that recommendation process.
That's fine, and I will do that whether I'm on the case now.
Yes, and we're interested. Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so, um, there are two questions for, uh, this committee today to consider. One is, do we have the resources to implement that, the academies of Anchorage in FY '26 and really beyond? Because approving memo 162 would essentially begin to commit resources in that direction. Um, and two, um, does that recommendation best align resources with, uh, outcomes for students? And so I wanted to, I, I did, uh, send some questions in advance to our CFO, uh, regarding ASD's longer-term fiscal picture. And I'd like to begin with the slides that, um, Mr. Ratliff, uh, prepared. And so if you could please bring those, whoever is in charge.
Yep, I'll run this. Great. Okay, uh, so the, the question was asked, how much additional money throughout the la- next five or six years are we going to need to implement the academies? Uh, holding other, and essentially what our kind of out, long-term outlook looks like, holding other programs harmless? So, I put together a few different slides and, you know, I want to preface this with, I don't know how much money I'm going to have in July. The state has not fulfilled an obligation, either increased the FSA or, um, signed budget of any sort. It hasn't, you know, you know the process. So, we don't know how much money we're going to have next year, much less '26, '27, '28, '29, '30. Um, so that being said, there's a lot of unknowns that, uh, we'll touch on some of them, but, um, it makes me a little nervous putting out projections this early because a lot of times that's the standard you're held to. It's like, oh, back in May, you said it was going to be an $80 million dollar deficit, now it's $100 million, what gives type thing? So, just going to put that out there to begin with, but, um, first kind of talk through a little bit of what the ask is going forward. Um, so we separated this out into different pots of money and how different, FDS, that's the Academies grant essentially. The Academies Anchorage General Fund, that's through Teaching and Learning where we're currently, um, funding a lot of these things. Or some of the, some of the staff work that needs to be done, changes we've made already. Uh, the CTE in our general fund, which, and the Carl Perkins grant, uh, which those are both not specific to academies, but they do provide, uh, just CTE funds in general. Um, some of those go to middle schools, not necessarily going to be directed to the high school. So, but just to include it and say, here's the money that we currently have. Um, so you see in FY '26 down here, about 3.6 million, that's the ask essentially for the, uh, six of eight schedule at high schools. Provide the additional, um, staff needed to implement that. Uh, the next kind of jump, other than inflation, these do have inflation built into them, I think about 3%. Yeah, yeah. So, we do kind of roll that through this model as well. Um, the next jump you see is in FY '29 and that's when that Academies of Anchorage grant goes away. Um, so really just kind of two pieces that would be pulled into the general fund over the course of time. And there's some other shifts in there between like Carl Perkins things that might phase out of there and go in the general fund. That's really, really small dollars compared to the, the larger ask overall of the Academies grant going away and then the, the, the additional teaching staff. Um, a few different opportunities we have to mitigate those costs, the need for credit recovery. We can have those classes embedded in the high school day versus being either in the summer or outside the school day. Uh, you could save some money there, there's additional federal grant opportunities that we could seek out to try to mitigate some of this. And then whatever community support and possibly naming rights we get for the academies could offset some of those costs as well. But we really don't have a good idea of, um, a, a way to quantify that at this time.
Yeah, if we go as to these estimates, is, is it impacted at all by whether we go with a six, seven, eight schedule?
Yes, I mean, so right now we've.
What is this based on?
So, this is based on a six of eight. Right now, we're doing, we're base, our budget's built on a five of six for high schools. So, if we were to move that to six of eight, that generates about 30 extra staff or about three and a half million.
And that's amazing.
That's what this three and a half million represents here, yeah. Um, I should have said this is in millions, but it's not, so.
So, the ongoing investment in the academy model with a six of eight schedule is really $10.5 million-ish.
Not in this.
I mean, is that, that's sort of conceptually how much it costs on an annual basis?
Uh, about three and a half per year, yeah.
Um.
Um, so what, are you looking at?
I'm looking at the total funding needed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would include, the total funding would be, uh, would include the three and a half new, the seven millions about what we have currently that we're operating with.
President Holloman has a hand.
Yeah, President Holl.
Thank you, um, so the, the immediate cost over the next three years of 3.6 million. We're also including using the, um, am I right, three and a half million dollar, or $3 million grant? And I guess the question is, what cost is that covering that we will assume in 2029? I had kind of taken the 3.6 million as the extra cost of running it, but, but it seems like there's something being masked by the grant.
Well, once that grant goes away after five years, and I believe the bulk of the cost is going to be the academy coaches and the assistant principals. Um, Kirsten, I'm assuming they have additional insight into what goes into that. But that would be kind of the longer-term outlook as that grant expires. And then if we, you know, we, there's opportunities to get additional grants to cover some of that, but, um, certainly not awarded yet and/or even applied for. So, it's, that one's harder to know.
So, Andy, I could elaborate a little bit. So, it does pay for the eight academy coaches and the four freshman academy assistant principals that have been hired. Um, it also pays for, um, a significant portion of professional development for our teachers. Um, and it also pays for, um, some transportation for students to have the guaranteed experiences of a college expo and a UAA campus visit. Um, that we've talked about associated with freshman academy. There's also additional transportation in there for things like the college fair at UAA. Um, and there's additional funding in there for class fees and industry credential testing fees, things to level the playing field for students so they have that level of opportunities.
Gotcha, that, that helps, thank you.
Member Jacobs has the same.
Yeah, Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Member Chair. Um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the, um, estimate chart in front of us. Based on the mitigation opportunities, listing additional federal grants as an opportunity. Um, I'm assuming that the projected, um, values in the chart assume that no additional grants will be awarded that haven't already been awarded to ASD to include, I want to say that I, I heard during our last presentation that ASD was encouraged to apply for a, an opportunity recently, which, well, doesn't, it doesn't guarantee anything, certainly bodes well. So, like that, for example, isn't included in the total funding available, um, in future years, is that correct?
That's correct. You mean additional grants are not built into this model, it's purely the additional costs that would be, need to be picked up by a general fund if no other sources are made available?
And I know that a big part, there's been so much work, um, community collaboration coming into the preparation of the master plan. But what do we know about defined inputs from industry partners as far as staffing or funds to help with, um, these costs? Like, who has said, I've got $5 million for you?
So, I don't think anybody's said we have $5 million to give away. Um, United Way has provided a full-time position to support this work as one of our community partners. Uh, UAA has funded a full-time position to work with school districts, us being one of the major school districts that they would work with. Um, and there's been sponsorship from the municipality, um, to sponsor the career expo, um, which is, um, essentially donating at the Denina Center, um, their staff's time, that sort of, um, in kind donation. Um, so, we haven't even named academies officially yet, so there's no way to have sponsorship of academies that don't exist yet.
Okay. Oh, Member Wilson, please.
Yes, a, a couple of different things. I, I wanted to comment on, um, your last question, Kelly, the, the community partners, they, they don't typically, and, and won't, um, in my experience, stand up until the program's in place. So, the academy's not, um, if, like, like, uh, Kirsten said, the, the academies haven't been named yet. So, there's, um, that, that is a process that usually comes after, like, community partners will, um, any, any resources they have available to help is, it, it won't come until after the academies are actually launched, honestly, um, in my experience at least. Um, the, my, my question, Andy, is, there was a couple of things you listed off as, as far as funding. Um, one of them being like summer programs or, or, uh, programs that, that currently we fund to help students recover credits that would be worked into the academies. I just wanted to clarify that that's money that would be spent either way. It's just try, you're working it into the program if the, if, if we offer additional, um, like, seven classes a day or eight classes a day versus the six that we're offering. I, I didn't, I just wanted to distinguish this, some of what I heard is funding the money that we spend now and we will continue to spend. It's just being incorporated into the academy's concept, is that correct?
The thought behind that would be if you have, you can take eight courses in a semester versus six, you can get more credits and have opportunity for those credit recovery classes during the day versus a separate line item outside of that for summer school or credit recovery. So, it's more kind of eliminating that other cost that's outside of your normal schedule, so to speak. And Kirsten Rutter can probably expand on that better than I can.
That's correct. We spend about $1.7 million, um, annually on summer school and credit recovery. And that doesn't include additional agenda that's spent out of the secondary education budget. Um, that's not, um, classified as credit recovery per se in the line item budget. So, um, there's a significant portion of funding that's spent on credit recovery and summer school in our budget.
And 1.7 is high school?
Yes.
And, okay, so I, I just want to be cognizant of, um, there's a lot I want to get through. Um, can, uh, maybe, can we go through your slide?
Yep, we can go through the next one pretty quickly. Um, so, but keep these bottom numbers in mind here because that's kind of closed over to when we look at it as a cost per student. So, the additional costs are being 12,000 kids, the first year is about $300 per kid. Um, compare that to some of the other programs that we ran that were listed on, on your request for holding harmless, ignite immersion in sports. Um, and one clarifies with high school sports only, uh, forgot that big, that slide, or saved anyway. Um, so just to kind of, uh, and I, my's idea of how that changes, then in FY '29, that jumps up to a little over 500 bucks for per student. And then in the last slide, this is where I kind of get in, uh, trouble for projecting out stuff well, well before it happens. Um, so this is kind of our outlook based on what's in statute now. Uh, the first column shows what our revenue is going to be, you can see the 8.8 million that we added back contingent upon the state doing something. Um, for our revised budget, that would go away, we get our one-time revenue in and reduce our reliance on fund balance. And it does include an add-back of about $10 million or so, uh, um, either giving money to charter schools, health insurance, whatever cost might be added back with some of the additional money. Really kind of a minimalistic approach on it. So, if you were to add money to the FY '25 budget revision that we do, once the governor signs the budget, then, um, these, these numbers all change. So, but that would carry forward, this assumes 3% inflation. This assumes three percent inflation on expenditures, flat funding for our revenue, and then keeping, uh, eight percent fund balance. So the seventy one million we plan to spend in fund balance, draw this down, we're just going to draw this down to five percent. Um, spending only fifty one of that, which is a total over the next two years, would get us back up to eight percent. Um, and then here you can see the add-back of three point six million or so for the academies, then again in twenty nine. Um, the kind of focal point of this is this remaining deficit of eighty seven million that's going to be there. You know, if we don't have the academies, that's still eighty four million dollars. It's, our problem is considerably bigger than this, than this, if, if nothing changes, right?
Right. But, but I guess my question is, we would need to pull resources from somewhere to fund the academies in the projection.
Right, I mean, it is, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any way around that. It's being an increased cost unless we can get some other grants to pay for it. Um, but in the scope of it, of three and a half million to an eighty seven million dollar deficit, um, just kind of want to put that in perspective to what our somewhat poor outlook is going to be.
Putting it in perspective, if you cut eighty four million, you don't get anything to cut. And that three million dollars is going to be really bad. That's what the question is right now, I think that's being asked, because, you know, if you, if you cut five billion, okay, but if you cut fifty million already and cut five billion, you've cut everything easy at that point. And everything else you got cut after that is going to be
But we're going to have to cut. The reality is, we're going to be cutting across the board, it's not just the academies. So why are we, why?
The issue is with adding the academy while we're cutting programs that already exist. That's what's being raised as a question and saying, how are we going to get three and a half million? Where was it going to come from? Because we cut everything.
It will cut something else.
Cut easily across the board, then we're going to be cutting essential programs. That's what the concern is.
I, I mean, I understand the concern, but I, but, but we, we need to look at all programs, not just the academies.
Of course.
The academies are, well, being the one that costs the most.
No, but, I mean, every year, we're, the board's responsible for a balanced budget.
Absolutely.
And I anticipate that in seven months, we're going to have a pro forma that will have been adopted that will give the administration guidance for the FY twenty six budget. And right now, it looks like we're going to be giving some challenging guidance.
Yes.
I think as a, I'm a little nervous about next December. Great, okay, we can all be nervous together. Okay, um, do you have another slide? I want to say no.
Uh, no, I was just, I was just commenting, trying to make it quick.
Okay, um, checking in on time, it's about twelve thirty. I want to reserve time for discussion about options. Um, America, are you able to pull up the slide deck? I threw a lot of spaghetti on the wall together, um, uh, in, in a slide deck, um, that I sort of want to go through quickly. Um, and I think that, uh, some of the questions have been answered in this presentation, so I appreciate that. And it is posted, so board members can review it more at your leisure later.
I can pull it up and drive it to you if you want.
All right, there are a lot of them. Um, so just really briefly, ASD has a very long history of collaborating with other partners. Uh, when it was the Anchorage Independent School District, we worked with the University of Alaska to develop the Anchorage Community College, uh, for post-World War II on-ramps to local career opportunities. That took place on the second floor of what is now West High. Um, we currently, I think there are lots of supporters at King Tech here. We have wonderful language immersion EPIB sequences, and we have lots of beloved academy sort of type offerings in our comprehensive high schools. Um, and this was where I wanted to nod to people who have been in the room, uh, for a long time, you know, changing, uh, education funding at the state level in the late nineteen nineties, you know, committing to the vision for Destination Twenty Twenty, working for school, with school business partnerships for decades, boots-on-the-ground instruction for decades, right? People have really, um, I'm like on slide two now, maybe. Um, people have really put a lot of, um, effort into developing an incredible array of opportunities. Um, I, uh, I'd like to understand, slide three, please. Um, where, where we're coming from. So I went back and worked through board docs and, uh, was seeing, really have found that December of twenty seventeen is when ASD, um, I think that's the first hit on Nashville, to use it as like metadata in board docs. Uh, that's the first time Nashville, uh, turned up in, in the board docs wayback machine. And the column comes from a recent, um, uh, the twenty seventeen eighteen is the graduation rates by school. What's in bold is what the, the comprehensive high schools' graduation rates were at that point in time. And then the, the table to the right is a piece of, um, uh, of a bigger sheet, which I'll look at a little bit later, of what, um, our com team put together just to show the different, the growing fiscal challenges and some of the actions ASD is taking at the time to mitigate. So, uh, really, Dr. Bishop, um, was working with others to develop, um, a new plan for, uh, King, what would become King Tech and robust CTE pathways in neighborhood schools. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. Um, I just wanted to do a quick survey, oops, of where we are. This is the chart at the right. It comes from, uh, the master plan on the academies. Uh, this is from our data dashboard. So when we talk about percentages of schools pursuing CTE courses, you know, the size of the school really has varied on the number of students. Um, you know, eighteen percent of kids at West is still twice as many as nineteen point seven percent of students at Uwerber High School. Um, but we do have hundreds of students, uh, pursuing an array of CTE courses, um, across our comprehensive high schools. Um, this is kind of, the next slide, please. You know, where we, where we were and where we are. Um, we've gone from these robust CTE pathways and neighborhood schools vision to, and really for the first time was around April of twenty twenty two, when, that's when Ford NGL kind of came onto the boards, um, was introduced to the board. Um, to, as Dr. Bishop said at the time, you know, how do we work with what we have? Yeah, more money is not going to be put into education. Uh, but the Ford team was, was coming to ASD, I think with some Essar funds, um, to really do a deep dive into, uh, what our opportunities might be. Um, and so we've gone from there to now projecting to larger investments as we move forward with the vision that we have, um, sorry, you know, graduates who hold in credits and industry credentials that are aligned with the workforce in each of the region and can demonstrate increased achievement, improved preparation for college careers in life, and increased high school graduation rates. And those are taken from the memo, uh, before us. And so the, the next slide, please. The next question I had was, do we have the money for this, uh, investment next year? And that was sort of what I think Andy helped us, uh, look at. Um, I think should the board support it, they, the board will find the money for it, but it will come at a cost of something else if nothing changes. Um, next slide, please. The basic context, again, these are put together by team ASD, I appreciate them both. Um, I circled when that first trip to Nashville took place. Since then, we've projected a significantly larger structural deficit. We've had a number of mitigation measures. Um, and we've really relied on our Essar funds and state one-time funds to keep everyone, and, and a PTR increase, uh, to stay afloat since then. So the vision's been there for some time and, um, sort of been treading water. Um, and then the next slide. And this was, uh, my sort of working model of what we were looking at. This is taken from the FY twenty five budget, which, as we've talked about in other finance committee meetings, kind of becomes obsolete as soon as it's printed, uh, but it is a big number that, at least, uh, earlier this year, we were thinking that the FY, uh, twenty six shortfall was ninety one million and the FY twenty seven shortfall was twenty million dollars thereafter. Um, next slide, please. This is my own estimation, so I want to say that any errors are my own, uh, in this. Um, but working through potential funds that I thought might be coming to ASD, uh, really, if you go to the bottom section, um, you know, I, my guess is that, well, we'll be, um, we need additional revenue to avoid incurring cuts beyond thirty eight to forty million dollars in programmatic reductions. Um, so I could be off. And then this is just a table to the right showing, uh, that our PTR ratios have increased since FY sixteen, um, as we've struggled with our funding. And just a reminder to everyone who might be watching that, um, you know, if no one-time funds are approved by the governor, that we're looking at a PTR increase and the loss of some of our, our programmatic integrity next year. Um, so that is a priority the board has already expressed that we don't want to go there. Um, next slide, please. So the question I had, one of the questions that I had was if ASD made the recommended investment for FY twenty six, would the additional three and a half million dollars for thirty FTE align with the scale of resources? Would model academies fund their programs? So we looked into Nashville's budget. Um, each of those are their schools. Um, this is ASD's, like, in our budget for, under general fund dollars. And they're putting a couple thousand dollars more per student into their academy system than we're capable of doing. Um, so I just, when we think about the successes that academy programs have had, um, they are, the, the resources coming into those programs are just something that I, I think is important for everybody to understand. Um, and that becomes, if you could go to the next slide, please, particularly when you compare the number of pupils per certificated FTE. Um, the column at left is Nashville and the column at right is ASD, and that includes the Essar-funded ones that I was able to calculate. So they've got a lot more bodies in their class, in their schools than ASD does. Um, so we're going to, we're talking about investing another thirty district-wide, which certainly will help with the schedule, but I don't know that that's going to provide the teachers who maybe need to be in place to really support the CTE coursework. Um, so that's a concern that I have. Um, next slide, please. And then it sort of from, in my mind, it raises the question is, is moving forward in this way the optimal way to align available resources to improve graduation rates? Which is one of the rationales. Um, and I really, I hadn't thought a lot about our graduation rates until engaging with this. Um, I think that there is, the data suggests that there's a difference in our comprehensive schools, um, than district-wide. And I am reticent to personally apply resources broadly and think that perhaps more strategic resource alignment could translate into gains for student, um, outcomes. Um, could you go to the next slide, please? And so I tried to get a longer-term trajectory of ASD's graduation rate growth. So this, the, the chart of, kind of the left comes from, um, a twenty sixteen document, kind of in the middle of Destination Twenty Twenty. And in FY eleven, we were around a seventy two percent graduation rate. If you look to FY nineteen, the comprehensive high school graduation rate was like ninety one point seven percent. Um, then it started to dip down again and, and it stayed kind of flat. But even today, well, as recently as FY twenty three, the graduation rate at our, our comprehensive high schools is really different than what we see, uh, district-wide. Um, it's, you know, five points lower, uh, district-wide. And I think, um, that is being affected by the graduation rates at some of our charter schools and especially in the credit school, the special schools and credit recovery. Um, so I think one of the peculiar things in my mind is that the academies at Anchorage is putting funds into the comprehensive high schools and maybe less of a targeted resource allocation to some of the, either specific schools, um, to, to the specific schools who may stand to benefit the most. Um, next slide, please. So if we're going, if the board's vision is to approve memo one sixty two as it stands, which authorizes the master plan to go forward, um, and make those investments in FY twenty six, um, I think it's relevant, I mean, I guess I would appreciate more information from the administration. This is the, next slide, please. A bit of a, a quick dive, um, into what works clearinghouse. Do career academies promote academic achievement? Um, and there is maybe indeterminate effects found for outcomes like ACT reading scores, ACT math scores. Um, next slide, please. A twenty nineteen study says that career academies show promising evidence of effectiveness on attendance and high school completion and industry credentialing, but indeterminate effects on sort of the academic side of things, on math achievement, literacy achievement, college readiness, college enrollment, or academic achievement. And that is concerning to me. Um, next slide, please. Um, and this is again returning to what works clearinghouse, to the career academies enhance college outcomes. Again, indeterminate effects were found. There is probably a lot more research out there. This is a, a quick dive that I took. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this is from a report we received, I think, last July, uh, from the AASB. Um, there was data commissioned about what happens with ASD's graduates. And, um, you know, right now, we've got about forty, maybe forty-two percent of our students enrolling in college or university. There's definitely a shift, uh, from twenty nineteen, um, and to twenty twenty of students, um, pursuing, uh, higher education in-state, uh, than out-of-state. Um, but, you know, forty, forty-two percent of our students, it's a lot of kids who need to make sure that they have the proper academic sequences, um, to get their ducks lined in a row, to be competitive college applicants at, at a local and national scale. Um, next slide, please. I'm not going to read everything here, but I think that there are significant concerns that board members have received about the academic effects of the academy's implementation. I know that I've raised some. Um, I think there's sort of generally, um, you know, if we are putting all of our freshmen in mandatory freshman academy offerings, um, we know that, you know, pivoting them from, um, ancient civilization and the freshman year is going to derail some other opportunities later on. Um, there's a concern from parents and stakeholders about reduced academic contact time. Um, another board member raised the question of what happens about chronic absenteeism? So if we have a Monday, Wednesday, Friday slash Tuesday, Thursday block schedule and a student is sick on Friday, um, or missing, you know, you're going to go from Wednesday to Tuesday to talk about your algebra or to practice your Spanish. Um, let's go to the next slide. Um, we've received some information about some increasing, um, trends in terms of staffing. So teacher resignations and vacancies. Next slide, please. Uh, this was from written testimony shared with the board just a few days ago. Um, so a longer-term trend of the vacant positions. So, you know, there's a concern of how do we find the additional staff, given like the current vacancies that we have? Um, and we're getting towards the end, I promise. Um, written testimony, the next slide, please. Uh, my calling this meeting today is to ask the finance committee and ask the board as a whole, the members who are here, uh, to consider, I guess, the, the world of, of options uh, that may exist other than voting yes or no on memo one sixty two as it stands. Um, I think that there is a potential for us to be able to go slow, slower right now than is proposed, to be able to go fast, to be able to identify industry contributions, whether it's through naming rights or through the donation of, I don't know, ambulance bays. Um, and not to speak of people to develop that transportation plan and transfer policy, which I think have yet to be fully designed and, uh, let alone implemented. Um, and really to improve buy-in. There's a lot of people who already are all in. There are others who, who need their hands held a little bit or a lot more through this. Um, so I think that the, my hope is that this conversation, uh, will allow the board to express guidance on what the educational direction of the district should look like, really a kind, kind of a reflect on the financial implications. So, you know, there, I put three options to consider right now. Um, there are probably more than that. You know, on one option that I've drafted is the idea of having a sort of a multi-year rollout of freshman academies, uh, that would be optional. Um, and a different option And a different option would be a multi-year pilot, right? Rather than spreading our grant resources across all eight comprehensive high schools. You know, you could take those twelve FTE and pour them into one school or pour them into two schools. And we're fully resource those pilot schools over a period of time, which I think would look a little bit more like the resources that are. Involved in Nashville and in Akron and other model academy systems. Um, the board could do nothing. I mean, the, the finance committee could do nothing and we can just. Have a, a business as usual vote um in a week. Um, or the finance committee could come up with a different solution here today that I haven't yet thought about. Um. I do want to, and I mentioned this in the board meeting the other day, next slide, please. Uh, that, you know, say that our timeline is faster than either Nashville or Akron implemented. Um, next slide, please. That the Nashville timeline, and this is what I shared in that voice clip, um, really is maybe like a seven-year timeline. But they, they launched their freshman academies and maintained them for, what I can tell, for about three years. Next slide, please. Uh, the Akron model really conceptualized things early on and began with a pilot. So both of the substitute memos. Reflect these, these other potential uh models to begin with. Next slide. And then, you know, this is just something that, like, it's a realistic thing that we're struggling with. We've got a significant backlog of deferred maintenance, which we've talked about in this finance committee. Um, you know, other communities have the means uh to invest in the buildings. We're talking about investing in Bartlett, but that's a seven-year process. Um, or, or more. Um, so I'm not saying that the facility investments. I mean, I think that they're going to be extraordinary and bring lots of opportunities to our students, but it's an uphill battle that I see right now. Um. Can we go to the next slide? This is. This is a timeline of just sort of the different work that I have understood to take place. Um. Things have certainly accelerated in recent years as we've launched the academy initiative. Um, I should have said earlier on that, you know, that early vision was probably derailed by the earthquake and the pandemic. Uh, and we're kind of coming back to the beginning. Uh, next slide. And then just to present the committee with the two paths forward that I envisioned as options. This is the first, which I would call S one, which is um rolling out fresh, optional freshman academies in our high schools. Um, and the second one, um, which we'll call S two is. The last slide, and it is a multi-year pilot timeline. So there is a lot here. I've spoken for a lot of time and I'm interested to hear from different board members.
Um, I'll, I'll start just with one issue that I want to correct or clarify, provide additional information. Uh, in twenty sixteen, uh, the administration presented to the board how the major. High schools were doing much better graduation rates compared to the overall grade. Um, at that time, I remember it because I questioned that and. So anytime I felt physically threatened as a school board member, as a result, but the school like Bartlett. The kids were sending a bus over to save and they didn't get counted in that group. And it's like this group is that group, but they came from the major schools. And so it was kind of misleading and it was kind of self-serving to promote that, look, we got ninety percent of the school. So it was a really, it's kind of messy to look at that, I think, looking at the entire district, but it doesn't negate any of the issues that you raised. I just want to go on record that that was a very misleading deliberate statement and it was acknowledged later. But it was not responded too well by the administration, the school. Um, and I remember extremely well where it was at and what happened. Um, they're not with us anymore, the master superintendent, so just let you know that too. Uh, in fairness, um, this goes into the issue that we have so many critical needs. We're not getting the reading scores up. We've got the tremendous academic achievements, we've got eighty-one percent Hawaii Pacific out, and we've got seventy percent native, sixty-six percent. Uh, blacks that are not reading at, you know, that when we're doing this case, and we've got twenty-eight percent who are white. And we're primed, we're the largest uh minority, you know, uh. With culture here, within, within here, we look at a lot of different languages, all the schools, and we are doing right with the academic achievement gap. That takes money. Those are resources that, what can we do? We gotta be able to do something, but it takes resources. It takes resources to address some of the other issues. I agree with you completely. If we're going to be cutting three and a half million dollars or something in three years, we're going to be cutting something because we're not going to get that much money by then. Maybe if we, if they yield to us an adequate funding in some sort of negotiated deal or court decision, but short of that. We're not going to have, we're going to be cutting every year and we're going to be adding something. I want something with this academy. I want to go forward with some type of approach. It's got community support. There were a lot of benefits to it and I like that. But I'm not ready to say to, on Tuesday, oh, we're going to commit the three and a half million dollars in a couple of years. I don't see that as, as viable for us to do that until we know all the options. My concern with this personally is that some of the issues and concerns that are being raised and some of these issues. That's a type of discussion I would like to have coming from the administration rather than, rather than. Um, having the kind of thesis theory of the work done by the chair. Uh, it's very thorough and it's very appropriate. That's what the board should be doing. We have, we gotta vote for the kids, we gotta do what's gotta do, we gotta do the research to do it, and I applaud holding this meeting. And I really appreciate the detailed work that you've done. It's a lot of work, but it's absolutely outstanding. I love it. But it would be something that with the discussion with the administration I'd like to have. Uh, didn't have that. Uh, I asked in the presentation to me, what are the negatives? And then one issue is staffing, and that is really critical. We got four hundred staffing kind of things, vacancies with the thing. We can't fill the jobs we got right now and we're going to try to fill thirty jobs. With those, those staff are either going to go internal or from, or, or from external. Either way, we're going to be reducing the staffing for other types of things that we're doing. I just don't know where we can actually do it with the lack of support from the state. Let's put the blame where it's at. We're not adequately funded. We're trying to do more. I applaud that. We're trying to. Whatever we can do to increase academic outcomes, whatever we can do for scores, we're doing some things that. Crossing people like start times, but we're doing what we need to do. With this one, the, the speed of it and knowing that we're going to be cutting uh massively in a few years. The, putting that out at a different time point so we don't have to cut. The night program again. We don't have to cut the immersion program. We don't have to cut anything else out there simply because of it. And, uh, and so that becomes a huge issue. And, and, you know, I don't want costs to be an issue that because we had three and a half million, we had to cut more schools. When we see the analysis and if we were adequately funded, we would have as many schools that we've cut. That's what, what we're looking at probably. And that bothers me. So I appreciate this information. I think it's critical. It's a, it's a discussion that should have taken place before this meeting, but it wouldn't have taken place unless you called this meeting and did that research. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, I, I agree with some of what you said, but that last thing. I think this is very, you know, I mean. It's out of sync. It's out of sync. First of all, we've not, we've not even as a board discussed memo sixty-two. We have not. And so for, for us to, I mean, it's wonderful work. I mean, you got a research brain, you love this stuff. I appreciate it. I applaud you on it. But you are not the one, we're not the ones that are going to have to do the work. We're not the ones who have to come up with, if, if your three questions. If the three questions or, or your four questions or my four questions are important. Then we need to identify those questions and let the superintendent do what we are paying him to do. And let the staff do what we're paying them to do. We don't have all the, the impacts of what this is going to mean. For, yes, we know it's going to cost money. Everything we do costs money. Every kid we serve deserves to have the best. So it's not just about the, 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 the academies. It's about. What, how are we, how are we creating an exceptional education for every kid? So I. To, to, the, the data is, is going to tell us different things at different points in time. I would rather have the, because I have questions that I have been waiting for one sixty-two when we discuss one sixty-two. Not when we bring forth a substitute in place of one sixty-two. So that, that really does concern me procedurally. Personally, I do support the, the academies. I support memo sixty-two as it is. If it can be made better, then let's make it better. Let's give the superintendent and the staff the opportunity to do what we pay them to do. If you want to know about graduation rates, if you want to, you can do your own research, but. We have experts in the room who can also uh, uh, put that in the context of teaching and learning. And I, and, and we're all bright in different ways, but there are some things we just have to have. We have to trust and, 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 and accept that somebody might have, have a different thing. So I appreciate the, and I know other people want to talk. I appreciate the, um, the research. I appreciate the meeting. Uh, but this is the conversation I would rather have with the full board. And with the administration with guidance prior to whatever our questions are. And that piece got missed. And I, if we need to slow down, then let's slow down. We do not have to do anything on the Fourth of June. That was, that was a date that we decided on, but I would want to hear from the superintendent about what does it, what would it mean if we, if we extended. Uh, the input on, on, on memo one sixty-two. But I, I'm totally uncomfortable going forward with two, two substitutes.
Can I, I see that we have questions online. Is it okay if we extend uh fifteen minutes? Just that, is that a reasonable?
Probably a half hour. I move a half hour.
All right. It's all seconded, but I believe if you, me too, um, but I, my goal is to be done by one fifteen. Okay. Okay, uh, member Wilson, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. The, the academies has given our community and community partners the opportunity, the ask to participate and to help. With our students, to help prepare them for their next step, to help, uh, just to help in many ways. And, and those community partners have stepped up in such a big way. All of the time they put into these tactic teams, all of the thought, the process, the investment, they're truly invested. In these academies and, and I've had many of those conversations. And they're, they're asking what the next step is. Like, what, what is our next step? We're, they're waiting for, to hear when. Um, their next step is for participation in the academies and how that's going to move forward, and they're excited about that. And we have partners like UAA that continues to, to really step up, like. Um, United Way that has hired someone to help with this process. The Chamber has stepped up. The AEDC, Alaska Economic Development Corporation, has put a tremendous amount of time. Um, and resources into helping with this process. And so we, we, we're, we've, we've asked the community in a way that they have never been asked before to be involved and to help. And they're doing that. But if we don't support the academies. Then how do we expect our community to continue to support the academies? How do we continue to? If, if we say we don't support this process and we're worried about funding, which we are worried about funding, I stress about it all the time. But are we going to choose to do less for our kids because we're continued? Or, or do we choose to push forward and do more and expect our state to continue to do more? It's just, it's, it's very frustrating that. That we, we've asked so much of our community, they've, they've contributed so much, our community partners have. And now we're having this conversation. It, it just feels like a bit of a slap in the face to them, and that's where my frustration is.
Appreciate that. Can I have a follow, ask the follow-up question? What, what do we know about? State interest in this endeavor in workforce development statewide?
Um, workforce development across the state is like the topic, no matter what industry you talk to. Um, everyone is looking for workers. In particular, um, people are very concerned about the. The numbers of young people leaving the state in the sixteen to twenty-four-year-old range, which is all of our graduates. Um, and so there's essentially a workforce vacuum right now in the state of Alaska. Um, and so. When business um talks about academies, they see a lot of hope for filling that gap. Um, and they also see um a lot more students um staying in state and seeing what those opportunities are here correctly.
I just added that, you know, my conversation with legislatures across party lines, there's an interest in developing our workforce. I think what was lacking was an ask from the district when it came to how do we ask the legislature to invest in workforce development? For example, moving into next legislative session, we can say one of our priorities is a block grant or career and technical education. Or if they were ever to open up the formula, maybe we need a larger multiplier for kids enrolled in CTE courses. There are legitimate, practical, sensible solutions that I think across party lines send a powerfulness.
Do we think that, um. Going back to our pro forma that we are rapidly approaching, when we have to create a balanced budget, do we, I mean. The new legislature will not have got settled in. And we're going to have to prepare and approve a balanced budget for FY twenty-six. Probably before anything happens. So I feel like that's a concern.
Which is what we had to do this year.
We did, and we changed the, we, we changed the rules. Um, we did. Uh, member Hickens?
I, I, if we try to look at it, grants us to help this, that's not going to give us the salary and benefits we need to recruit the people. We're not going to be able to keep the staffing. We're not going to be able to address that issue. They know we had ICE in here, but how far behind on salary? And that's several years, that's old, so it's a lot higher. They didn't approve the um, uh, defined benefit retirement system, which was the second reason why we have. Recruitment and retention, and they haven't done anything for that. Giving us money to say, here, you can go hire, here's money to hire teachers. Well, we can't fill the job that what he got is going to be nightmare. I am not proposing that we are abandoning the program. But we need to be honest with the community. We are so grossly underfunded that we can't fill the jobs with the teachers to be able to do the job completely. We, I agree with initiating something. I like the way Kelly did it. Let's do it something with a few schools. Let's get something going. So that we show the community and we can also show success and do a timeline that would allow us to do it. But, and at some point, they, we get additional funding, we can even accelerate what we're doing. But right now. We didn't even get a BSA increase. We got a one-time funding. And so that next year, they can give us another one-time funding in same pound, which is no increase at all. And we're going through this process over and over again. I don't think we owe it to the community. To say we're going to cut three and a half million dollars out of our programs here for you. I, I just don't see that as an obligation. We have an obligation to commit ourselves to do all we can to with the resources we have. And those resources are limited based upon staffing. We can't fill the jobs we got. We can't, we got so many to fill right now. I don't know where we're going to put it. And we are not. Impacting academic achievements at the lower grades, and we're looking at cutting things at the lower grades. And we're going to be looking at cutting that again. I want kids to start off better. And like I said, you. Eighty-one percent Hawaiians, so the native six who said why, not really great level. We need resources to do something there too. Something's got to be done. And to say that they can't do it or we're incapable of doing it or any other reason. I'm not ready to pull resources out of that in three years to say we're going to fund this with additional teachers.
Okay. I know that we have, uh, Carl online. I just want to put a pin that we, so we, we don't yet have. Confirmation from, of industry contributions and we don't yet, we don't have any sense of whether this. The state is really yet willing to fund this in any specific way, so we have hope. That potentially in the future, something could happen. Okay. Um, member Jacobs?
We have, we haven't even approved the plan.
No, we haven't, no. Um, member Jacobs, I think, had a question?
Um, so I'm just sharing my, my feedback, um, not as a member of the committee, but just having heard the presentation and, um. As someone who's, who's tried to think through, um, you know, what happens next. I, uh, I think it's important to, to recognize that we're, we're grappling with problems. One, that are, are multiple years out. I mean, twenty twenty-nine, when really the full brunt of the. Uh, financial impact for the academy model would um impact ASD's operating budget. The majority of us may no longer be on this body. Um, I think it's important to recognize that. Um. I think it's also important. I think it's also important to note that the um the the fiscals that have been outlined thus far assume a worst-case scenario where ASD receives no additional grant funding, which is unlikely. Um, no additional funding from the Alaska Legislature, which um I again, I think is unlikely. And um and no funding directly from community partners or staffing support, which would free up resources within our district. Which again, I think is unlikely. Um, I think the the challenge that we're grappling with truly is is and and maybe getting things twisted just a bit is um that we are uh underfunded as a district. Um and we are as a state, underfunding public education. We know that to be true. Um, that's a challenge that has to get mitigated. And the programs that have been highlighted as potential areas of concern, um you know, things like Ignite and Immersion, to be clear, and and the sport has spoken with one voice. Uh so I'm not stepping out here by saying, we know those programs are at risk if adequate funding for public education isn't addressed meaningfully um as soon as possible. Um, that isn't breaking news. So um with that said, this board and what I appreciate is we've repeatedly um put a focus on providing leadership in a space where we have lacked it at the state level. Um, we approved significant raises um in um cool uh effective collective bargaining agreements, which frankly, we do not have the resources to pay for. Um, we drastically increased our um deficit for years to come just recently by approving um the totem association budget and the ACE contract. We will again do that when we approve a contract that does what we can um do, which will help us do what we can to acknowledge um our largest portion of our workforce, which is the certified educator positions with AEA. Um, we do that because we we're making decisions that we feel are best for our students. Um and 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 we know that supporting educators and supporting our support staff um has an impact on providing um adequate opportunities for our students and helps improve um student outcomes. I see this initiative as addressing the the third goal that we have as a board, which is improving career technical education and opportunities for students. Um, the fact, the fact is that the state has put a priority on CTE um education opportunities. I think that was one of the targeted areas that Commissioner Bishop um outlined as where specific funding should go um in in lieu of a BSA increase. Um, things that have proven to be effective. Um, CTE was given to be one of those examples. Um, I think it's important to recognize that thirty-seven percent or so of Anchorage residents have a four-year degree. Um, and the majority of of the vacancies that exist um are in places where our graduates could potentially step into um if they had adequate pathways and opportunities. So I think it's important to get this right. Um, and so I I think the underlying concerns I largely agree with, which is we need to make sure we have adequate resources to deploy the academy program in general. Um, my my thought is, I I kind of view the the master plan as almost like a six-year CIP where we agree with the steps along the process, but we recognize that it's going to be continually reviewed, amended and adjusted based on current resources and facts on the ground. Um, maybe not a perfect analogy, but I I think there's some concern that the document is set in stone to a certain extent, once it's approved. And I, I personally haven't gotten that sentiment. And so while I might be um in favor of having a second year of freshman academy at some point, right now, I just don't know that I can definitively say that that's what's best for students. Um, whereas I do feel the freshman academy opportunity for students, providing soft skills that makes them uh better young adults after they graduate unequivocally um is a is a benefit for students. That is a win for ASD students, and I I know that. Um, and so I I'm generally supportive of the memorandum, but recognizing the concerns which are fair. Um, I I I do think we can, should revisit the timeline as is necessary and can be receiving continual updates on um on the progress and implementation and how things are going. Um, the other thing I'll say just briefly is, I I do think that we want to consider allowing parents the choice beginning the sophomore year, um where the industry-specific focus begins uh to choose an alternative pathway that doesn't involve a career academy. Um, I don't know that I necessarily want to use the phrase opt-out, but um I do think that's a choice we can and should consider providing to parents. Um, as as I, I think we, until we have more of a fleshed-out vision for what the academies will look like, um which we have a year before those begin. Um, I think that that's something that that parents could reasonably ask for. And hopefully, we we implement the vision with fidelity and it's something the vast majority of students opt-in to. But um those are kind of my thoughts, and I appreciate the latitude, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you for your comments. Are there any other board members with comments online?
I guess.
No, no, I said, hold on. Yeah, any other, okay. I know Marty, um Marty Link.
Yeah, staffing has come up a number of times. And so I I wanted to address uh well, one, I'm glad that the the board is interested in that. Something we've talked about a lot this year, and it is, it is definitely a concern. That number of one hundred and forty, that uh were the number of vacancies that we had on day one in our certificate positions, or our teaching staff in the schools. I want to give you a little bit more information that I think might be helpful in understanding the impact around academies of Anchorage. So when you think about that hundred and forty vacancies, over half of those are special. Which were to really a different conversation than we're having today around academies in Anchorage. Another thirty of those were elementary specific. When we look at the comprehensive high schools, there were only ten point four FTE vacant last fall, started school. For whatever reason, the vacancy that we're having is not at the high school level. And of those ten-ish positions, three of them were ROTC. And that's specifically because they've changed the funding structure for that, and they're having a harder time finding interested folks who are retiring out of the military who want those positions. So really, there's only about seven traditional teacher positions across our eight high schools and King Tech last year that were vacant at the beginning of the year. So I can't promise that next year or the year after that, with the trends we're seeing, that we're not going to see an increased number of vacancies at high school. And I can't explain why we're not seeing them at high school and we're seeing them at other levels. But right now, we're really not having a staffing issue at high school. The other piece I would add to that is the state allows us to certify teachers through a type M cert for their years of industry experience. That's how we have always certified teachers for King Tech. If we wait for somebody to show up with a traditional, you know, education program preparation who can teach mechatronics, we're probably never going to find that person. But if there's someone in their community who has two years of experience in a related field, state allows to certify that person. And that's, this actually opens up some pipelines for us in terms of bringing talent to the schools. And I can tell you, we've almost never had vacancies at King Tech, and that's largely how we staff those positions there. So I just wanted to give you that information as a word, because as staffing comes up, I think that's relevant information for understanding some of the bigger numbers, aggregate numbers we've talked about this year.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, remaining hobbys at a time. Um, I want to get us to the point where the finance committee um either chooses to make no action and we simply revert as a board to the memo one sixty-two as proposed at our June fourth meeting. Um, allowing the administration in the interim to respond however it deems applicable. So so option one would be take no action today as a finance committee. Uh, option two would be to support bringing a substitute, a substitute memorandum that would be aligned with the draft uh to bring a um sort of a focus on, you move forward slowly with freshman academies. So that would say offer, so currently, memo uh one sixty-two S one uh outlines that next year ASD would offer optional freshman academy programming. That in FY twenty-six, it would continue optional freshman academy programming. And that in FY twenty-seven, it would um continue optional freshman academy programming and also use the FY twenty-eight budget cycle to.
Kelly, I'm so sorry, this is, there's a lot of background noise. Is there somebody that's not on mute?
There is a, I'm so sorry, um there is, people are uh in the conference room next door.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Um, so so S S one is a possibility of really focusing our resources on freshman academy, but making it optional. Uh, member Jacob spoke to making the tenth grade through twelfth grade pathways optional. Um, I mean, I feel like there's going to be a robust discussion on Tuesday, no matter what happens, and I appreciate that. I just want to be able to send, decide what this committee is doing today. Um, so option one is do nothing, allow the administration to respond however it seems appropriate with the memo as it stands. Option two would be for the committee uh to bring a substitute memo forward, focusing time attention on freshman academy. Option three, as far as I understand it, would be to bring a substitute memo, and the draft I had is S two um that would pilot optional freshman academy programming in one to three schools of the administration's choosing next year. Um, the year thereafter, continue that pilot school approach with freshmen and grade ten. Then in year, uh in FY twenty-seven, continue in those pilot schools, freshman academy, the rollout of grades ten and eleven. Um, so anyway, so again, option one for the committee is do nothing, let the memo one sixty-two stand. Option two is substitute a freshman academy memo. Option three is substitute a pilot memo. And maybe before I have committee members raise their hands, is there anybody? Staff, um, online guests in the room? Yes, any comments?
Sure, I, first off, Madam Chair, I appreciate you putting a lot of thought and effort into the substitute memos in this presentation. You know, it'd be a lot easier just to go into Tuesday and say you don't support it and you're doing this because you want to create a consensus and then make this better. Um, so thank you for that. I I will say I do have concerns with the substitute memos as written. And one of the reasons is we didn't gather input on an opt-in program. I feel that to make freshman academy either a pilot or some small-scale, essentially elective program within a school is very different than what we communicated in all of my town halls that I led um as well as surveys. It's essentially a different program design, so it feels premature for the board to consider something that truly didn't come from the administration. Uh, to me, uh, an opt-in design is very different from a fundamental transformation. Where CTE for all is the expectation, with perhaps to member Jacob's point, a few exceptions. We can still have robust conversations around a fine arts academy or, uh, you know, an IB academy. But that's different than creating an optional elective program within a school. So I thought I'd be interested to share that.
Okay, I ask what, it's a right now, school's out for summer. Principals are thinking, and I've never been a principal, but I imagine they are busy thinking about how this year's eighth graders are going to become next year's ninth graders, and they're putting them in their different courses. Um, what are our principals doing right now as far as putting them into freshman academies? Are all principals putting every student in freshman academy? I see, great.
If if they haven't done so already, they will be, I mean, most probably have already. And they are, that's the plan. They've staffed their buildings for it.
And so the social studies teachers are all pivoting away?
There, it might be different teachers.
Okay.
Also, but they have been planning this for, they started that since they staffed their buildings in early April. March, February, yeah, right.
So currently, the administration's understanding is that every principal is currently processing their incoming ninth graders and putting them into freshman academy, whether it's fall semester or winter sema- or spring semester.
My grandson has a schedule already.
Okay, great. Um, okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question. So in terms of timing of the memo itself, um, I thought this meeting was one that we can all bring our questions to and uh give you, give the staff and superintendent more information so that we could have a robust conversation on the board. So if, um, what would be, what would, timing-wise, do we have to approve the memo on the board? Or if we need more time, can we take more time?
I think we'd have to talk about what that means right now. Um, that if we took more time, it would mean ideally kids are starting freshman academy. So as long as there's some understanding that all freshmen will be in freshman academy and will figure out the mechanics, then we could theoretically waive. But to member Jacob's point, I want to clarify it because it was correct, that the master plan is a living document. It can be changed. And for example, if the board did not feel as appropriate to invest additional resources into academies through the budget process, you don't have to appropriate funds for thirty additional teachers. So this all lives within our standard processes. So it doesn't, in my opinion, the master plan does not have to be. It can be voted on as a living document on June fourth. But that said, if there are strong values from the board, as though we want to have a fine arts academy, just as an example, or you know, we have questions about this, or we, you know, have concerns about the the various pathways that our business community and administration selected, we can have that conversation.
So if we've already approved three point whatever million dollars, right? No, is that part of the, that's part of the plan? I know we, we, what do we approve?
Yeah, the grant costs neutral for four years.
But that's for FY, for the next, for twenty-five.
Yeah, so if you're actually, we could do freshman academy for four years and it would be cost neutral. So really, what we're talking about is a schedule change.
Exactly. And, I don't know, Madam Chair?
Yeah, please go ahead.
So, so you just addressed the funding, the staffing and the time. That's it, that's all I have right now.
Okay, yes.
Just from my lens, the the substitute memo, they're not really written as a memo. There there, there's no recommendation, like the memo one sixty-two as it stands, we're, you're approving the master plan, but the S one and S two is kind of giving guidance. So it's not, I I don't see a clean way to to just swap it out.
Okay, so it would need, so a substitute, as it has been drafted, is not specific enough from that perspective? Which is why it's a draft. Great.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, member Wilson, please, go ahead.
Yes, so I I just wanted to, there there's a couple of things um I wanted to what, which has been highlighted that we haven't had the opportunity as a board to discuss the memo. Um, and there, there was also the um the the item that was pointed out that the master plan is a live document. I mean, it's not like every little piece of it has to move forward as it is stated in there, because there's things that are going to change based on um based on how freshman academy runs and all of that. Um, oh my God, and I forgot my main point. Holy cow. Uh, come back, oh, oh, the last one is the additional funding. Correct me if I'm wrong. But that additional three point five million is if we choose to go to an eight-period schedule a day, correct?
But we don't think we can move forward with the academy system without additional periods in the day.
And the reason why is, our students only have six periods. We want them to have robust choices. If they love fine arts or, you know, choir, they can do that. And they can complete a CTE pathway that leads to a high-demand job.
So so you, so the administration really sees the schedule change as a vital component of the transition.
We're essentially making CTE a core expectation, but we want ample room for electives.
And that is the eight periods or the seven-period a day plan. I've I've seen both of them.
Right, you, but even, yes, yes, I think number was some, the administration needs additional space, either seven or eight period, which has yet to be determined and finalized. Um.
But the cost is different for each, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's it. Seven periods is more expensive.
Seven periods is more expensive. Okay, let's get to the chair. Um, so what is the will of the committee? Actually, any other comments in the room?
Oh, gentlemen, I appreciate the issue of the timing. I don't want to authorize the administration, my view, or recommend authorizing administration that they can go spend a three and a half million based upon our projections of what we're going to be doing financially. We're going to have custom made of what we do. I don't think we're going to get that kind of full funding from from the state. There's little chance at all at all. And uh, there's a And, uh, there's a worst case scenario, they don't renew at one time, but that's going to happen, um, I believe. But beyond that, it's not positive. So I, I don't know, I, I don't want to give a, a, a support for the board, from the board, from my perspective, that you can go ahead and plan on cutting other things in three years to make sure this thing happens. And that we're saying it's okay. I, it's not okay to me, uh, with that. I don't want to hold back on forward with the freshman academy and extending that. And there's a point of contingency on there that these states will be reviewed based upon the funding from state. Let's put it out there to the community, making clear that we cannot project forward at this point because of the drastic cuts. If we maintain it at a level that we can maintain funding within what we currently have, even if we get additional VSA as, 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 member Jacob referred to, that's not going to address the fact we have to keep making cuts. So we're going to have options out there. So I would, I'm not opposed to, I don't want to stop the academy from going forward, but I want to go at a pace that we can maintain with the funding that's available. And I would like the administration to come forward with the recommendation that accomplishes that with an understanding that if we get additional funding, we will then schedule expansion of the program.
Okay, we are getting to very close to 130.
I have one comment to clarify to the board members who may not have read Kelly's request to Andy. She asked for, um, basically for next year, it was the 640 one-time funding and all other years, all the way back to what we got this year. So no additional state one-time funding, no additional grants. So I, I think when, when we look at that, we're, we're naturally assuming that all of a sudden that next year, um, we didn't get any state money at all. And honestly, at that point, we're at year nine or 10 of, well, below flat funding and you take in inflation. But when we get to that point, if there's no additional money, there's going to be 20-plus districts in the state that are now declared bankrupt and will have folded. So I don't know that the very worst possible case scenario should be the most likely. Just, just my thoughts, talking to legislators, because the ones who almost got there but didn't get there this year, they, they're not going to stop. And I think, assuming that we're going to go back to what we got this year, when no additional anything is, is probably not the most likely course of action.
Thank you.
Okay, well, just one, but I, I'm going to challenge that a little bit. We're not facing anything on the best case scenario, the worst case scenario. It's the most likely scenario. We're not going to get enough to eliminate the need to cut. We're not looking at what we could add that's going to impact student outcomes as well. There isn't a, what are we giving up opportunity-wise as well as what currently exists? And that bothers me. And so if we're going to add money for this program at the expense of not knowing that, I appreciate the administration has looked at it from their perspective on what we want. But I would have expected some sort of presentation that gives us that kind of information to look at. These are things, these are other options, not just the ones we want you to approve.
Okay, member, we've got, guys, we've got to finish up here. We're late. Uh, go ahead, please.
And, and I, I would like to know, and it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but maybe at the board meeting, how a change of course will affect the 15, $15 million grant money, grant money that we've already received.
It very well could affect the, the amount of money we get or the ongoing funding, but that would be something that would be right to grant and get reapproved. We wouldn't know.
Okay. And then member Jacobs and then I'm going to me, uh, ask for a vote here from the finance committee.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I just want to be clear that the financial chart that was brought up earlier very clearly articulated, I mean, short of the worst case, I guess the doomsday scenario would be the legislature appropriated education funding below what was, um, recommended based on the foundation formula. But the fiscal chart that is outlined indicates no additional future state revenue, no grant funding, which, you know, I said was unlikely earlier. I mean, I, I think if we're sitting here in, in five years and ASC doesn't receive another grant, that'll be, is that, that doesn't, that won't happen realistically based on what other, um, Ford and Shell districts have received. And so, um, that is a worst case scenario, um, is what kind of that fiscal outline presented. And so, um, again, if, if that were to happen, immersion, or I mean, a, a gifted education, everything will be on the, the block to be considered. So I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what the committee is looking to do, but I, I just would caution us from putting too much stock in a, in a future that frankly won't be realistic, isn't realistic. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so to the committee, members Fennelly and members Higgins, myself, I guess I would ask you to express your interest, if you are interested in the committee not as a body, taking any individual's member next week can do anything. But as a, as a committee, can you show me whether you are interested in allowing, in doing nothing today?
I'm interested in doing something because we already provide some direction. We're not making decisions on behalf of the board. We are expressing an opinion from the committee only. That's what we're doing and that's what we should be doing. And so from my standpoint, I would like to express the concern that the current proposal with additional three and a half million dollars coming up in a couple of years is something that we're not recommending until we have additional funding and that we get a revision that we can, that addresses that concern and that it can be, and that the, agreed with the administration, they were wording that if additional fundings are available, that it comes back to the board, that we can revise the schedule. But initially, we got funds to go freshman academy, let's not hold.
Okay, so you would like to bring something, member Bellamy, what is your, what is your preference as a member?
I would like to have an opportunity to discuss memo 162 with the full board and the administration.
So your recommendation as a committee member would be to do nothing?
To do nothing.
Replace that.
And, and because there will be an opportunity still to make amendments. And, and the, the, the information today has been helpful. It has created a history. It has created a depth of, under, a deep depth of understanding and connections. Uh, but it's really more like guidance. It's not, and if we have to come up with a substitute or amend what we have, then we amend what we have.
I will ask, so my personal preference is that the committee does, brings a substitute forward. So I guess that would be two votes for bringing something rather than doing nothing. But I want to pivot to whether that something should be a pilot substitute, a freshman academy-centered substitute, or something we have to consider.
Since we've got all the schools already on board going with the freshman academy, going with that approach and just deal with the freshman academy and extending that to be, be less disruptive to what demonstration is trying to do, but is not committing the company. The votes that they're putting forward in right now.
Okay, so your preference would be a freshman academy-focused substitute
I would like that.
For a one-year period, a multi-year period?
I don't know that we can do that, make that decision today.
We're giving.
I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to ascertain whether the committee would bring something versus nothing. And if there is a something, what that something should be. I'm happy to, um, move some kind, move that the finance committee brings some kind of a substitute forward focused on freshman academies. My inclination is, I guess I, we should be, which I knew that the finance committee, uh, brings a substitute memo to the June 4th meeting. And in the next intervening days, the substance of that substitute committee is refined.
I like that.
I think you would need a second then.
Same.
Okay. Um, all right. So I think since we are at the end of the committee.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So all the information that we've had today, the two of you have decided that you want to do, what is it that you're going to do?
If, that the, if the committee makes.
And you're not wanting this, the administration to do it.
Um, I'm happy to involve the, the administration in drafting, refining or drafting a substitute memo.
Do we want to hear from the administration as to how, what that, what this, with any feedback on what this would mean?
Not leave the administration out.
That's not my question. I'm, I'm talking to member.
I do think that, um, the administrative feedback is critical. I think at this point in time, the, the, this, the content of the substitute has yet to be defined. It has yet to be refined. And my recommendation would be that the finance committee brings, collaborates with the administration in the intervening days to bring some, so that it is aware of something. The document that we publicly noticed, the deadline would be.
A, a general, almost 72 hours prior.
So by the end of, so by the end of, by Friday, end of close of business, that a substitute memo is drafted. And at that point, the board can, um, move to adopt it or, or not. And that it would revert back to the memo 162.
I do understand the process. I just needed to know from this room today, so I, yeah, what we, you know, what the, what we're going to be doing and the impact to what we've already been doing, what their team has already been doing.
I think that I would be glad to continue to, uh, have conversations with the administration and finance committee members in the next two days, um, to produce a, a, a substitute to bring to the board at the January 4th meeting.
Can I ask them one of clarification?
Yes.
So how is, in, how is you and Pat bringing forth an amendment different than the finance committee bringing forth an amendment? Because I, I feel like this is you and Pat bringing forth an amendment to the memo. Since the memo hasn't even been discussed yet. I'm very confused.
That's a, that's a good question. Um, we don't have a specific substitute memo. So perhaps from a procedural point of view, but perhaps procedurally, the best, uh, the cleanest thing would be that the finance, I mean, this goes back to maybe member Bellamy's point. The cleanest thing would be that an individual member or members brings a, any amendments to the board.
Exactly.
Okay, then, then, then for a procedural point of view, let's walk back to vote. Um, I, I'd like to walk back to vote or we can re-vote.
I think the vote is fine. I just think you just need to, we just need to.
So the, the memo, any substitute memo would be from an individual board member or board members, not from the finance committee as a whole.
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, member Higgins.
It, the governance, I mean, it's the finance committee that's done this recommendation. The finance committee may have a split vote, but it's not Kelly and Pat. It's, it's the finance committee that we're meeting with and we represent. So I don't want it to be, say, this is Pat's proposal, this is Kelly's proposal, because it's not true. We, we're, we're voting on this as a, and while it's not a unanimous vote, it is a committee action.
Absolutely. And, and that was not meant to be a slight to you or member lessons.
Well, we, to remember, to remember Wilson's point, we don't have a specific memo that has been.
That's correct.
So, and in the interest of time, we're not going to have a specific memo that is adopted. But, uh, I appreciate the colla, I very much appreciate the collective input. And I think, uh, my intention will be to revert, um, based on member Wilson's thoughts and your thoughts, member Bellamy, that the finance committee as a body does not bring a substitute forward, but that individual members can be made.
Two, two of you, the two of you get together and do your, do the memo and bring it to the meeting.
All right. So with that, I think that's a clear intention that we substitute memo.
My other point was is that, you know, we, and you said that you would collaborate with staff to figure out those.
Just one quick question I'll ask the superintendent, would you prefer to go forward on this or go and skip to the next meeting? So that some of these issues can be addressed?
We don't have another meeting unless we all, we could order, I mean, we could, we could.
At this point, you might need to.
Yeah, we can get it here.
Yeah. All right. Then I think that four members will come to the meeting with amendments as needed.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Please send them electrically and covering the meeting for America.
Okay, okay, that'll, that's enough. Okay. All right. Um, with that, I appreciate it. I move to a chair. Second, thank you for your.